Okay.
All right. Today is 3/18/2019. I move we go into a public session under RSA 91-A:2-C. It's a roll call vote. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bill Keizer?
Chuck Keizer, aye.
Chuck Keizer, Dave Blinn. I now move that we go into non-public session under RSA 91-A:3-2-C. Again, roll call vote. I need a second, excuse me.
Second.
I need a roll call vote.
Bill Keizer, aye. Keizer, aye.
Dave Blinn, aye. Thank you.
And I will ask to that intro. Since this is the first meeting since town meeting and elections, the board needs to reorganize as far as a chairperson goes. We welcome Bill Keizer, our new board member. And I'll leave the nominations and the election to the board.
So gentlemen, I guess we're going to elect a new chair.
I nominate Chuck Keizer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. This is wonderful learning experience.
Check's in the mail.
You get an extra 500 for that.
Yeah, headaches.
Yeah. I got 500 headaches.
So I guess the, so we've done our organization and we're going to go into the road agents' report with Joan Thompson.
Well, good morning roads, obviously. We could go over plowing today with Patrick Marvols. We've been derving water, putting some stone overhead on the end. It's gravel, we got in a gravel transfer station today. I learned a pretty neat thing today. Daniel Bonton been telling me that I can steam the ground and thaw it out. So they had a steam pipe for us yesterday over Curry Road. This morning I was riding out and said, "Well, guess what?" Called him up, called the bluff. Well, he came down to the transfer station and ended up, we had four feet of frost, just like three, three, three feet, three foot, four inches, four foot in one depth. And he dumped 200 gallons of water in to get us started today. He put it down in the holes, he drilled holes with water, jet pumped it in there. Made like a series of four or five holes and opened the pile right up for us. And it took him maybe like two hours to get us that first 20 feet. There was four feet all the top and down the sides. Came back, got some more water, pumped the whole top of that thing full of holes for us. And it's just like summertime, you dig in that stuff and steam's coming right out, it's sort of a being.
This was the bank road stuff?
The stuff that we need to crush.
Oh, that was crushed, yeah.
He was in this accident and was telling me about it. And he said he does it for, was it Wilmington?
I think, I think he's done it for other towns. But he was telling me, he had a hand in Dandray.
I think it was Dandray.
Alright, I'm gonna call them, let them see it. It worked, it worked, it was like a bean. You fill, pump that water in there and you just let it sit there for like maybe a half hour. You reach in and just pull on it and it just, just like fire mulch.
That's cool.
Yeah. Just pay attention when there's something all the time, right?
Is that where we've been putting our ground roads on Pacific Road or way up on?
Right now, we're, I'm talking about, we're about halfway up to the top now. I'm pushing the morning. I was gonna try to get some bigger trucks tomorrow morning, but by 10 o'clock this morning, we were rolling through and pulling the water out through the road. So every other road was frozen and one of them working, looks like it rained on it for an hour. So I guess that's clear, if we're gonna pull it up on the dead end, we're gonna stay in attack, we don't want any bigger. So I guess it's still that. Anyways, that's the kind of way we're at, behind the end.
Were you able to get up to Bradley Lake Road?
We got up there, we didn't get any materials there. It's on the list for tomorrow morning, soon as we finish talking about, they're coming here.
I can call them later on.
The road is rough, it is not impassable.
Okay, the ambulance could get through with the need.
Yep, it was actually still frozen when I was there at 4:00 this afternoon, so.
Bradley Lake Road?
Bradley Lake from the dam up to that little short section there. Other than that, we've got some street signs, bridge signs that are missing on a couple of bridges. I got this in the mail, I think, I don't know, I think it must have been Friday because I threw it on top of my holder and I walked away. But again, I told them I'm just gonna give this to Keith and to the town, get the signs up in the next couple of days. And I know that we have, we have most of these bridge signs posted. I'm not 100% sure if we have the width, the one for the width, but we do have for the, we do have for the width, so we take care of that.
If you don't, just let me know and I'll order one from you.
Yeah, mind your own territory, we're gonna put together a list to know the street signs. Hopefully we can get those, be careful when the frost is going, if you get them in there. They're posted in the road, you guys need to clear that out.
Go ahead.
We did, so far, I only had one guy call, call out, and obviously they have to know right now. Tomorrow morning it's supposed to be 90 degrees, so if somebody wants to go at 4:00 or more, probably say okay. Other than that, our last street bridge, pretty much, we're right at the point where we're ready to go make arrangements with the folks and set up a gate, close the road down, just kind of waiting water at this point, so. With the summer wind, however, we're waiting for some bolts and nuts that we're waiting for. But the rail is there, we have paper in the house, so they have, came in.
And who were the water guys at? They're from the library, I think.
We actually have all of the stock here. I don't know if you guys are aware, we had an vandalism happening, going to White Oak. The only destruction that was, that destroyed anything was the pressure treated decking for the bridge, which was special order. We didn't either. What had happened is they took a bunch of dirt and pushed it right up against the pile of rubble, they had come out of the blue tap. And it really didn't make any sense. But as we cleaned it out, brought it off there, we figured out why. And they took like the corner of the box and gouged it, so we have eight pieces that have been jeopardized, compromised. We, Keith, I don't know, he worked the maintenance, I think we got some cuttings and granite thing. In that process, I was saying, email Joseph and see if we can substitute the shorter pieces because if we spare them out, may be able to lock them together, tie them in. And I don't know if he got that email out, and if he did, I don't know if he got a response yet. But there was six pieces, so if it's six pieces, I think, I mean, I don't know, the project up there.
Are they special order because they're all one length, like 22 feet or whatever?
They're 22 feet, exactly. So that made it a special order. They weren't quite as long to get as the rest of it, time wise, but still, we already have them, you know. And if we can come from, if we can do something different, we get by by it, that's what we're gonna do. If not, we'll come all the way out and we'll hold the last six. And if we can easily pull them off and pop them in, we'll get them.
Did they come in fairly quickly or was that part of?
That was the original, that was the planking itself. It was the original stuff, we had to do it a sixth time and then we upgraded. So we've actually had this stock for a year.
Okay.
Those are just two by sixes.
Those are just two by sixes, pressure treat.
Question. White Oak. We're now moving on to have the survey done.
We have a 30-day window that we have to wait for New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority to decide whether or not they want it. And then after that 30-day window, we can have the survey completed, it's partially done. And then move towards closing with the state.
Based on the housing department, then it goes to the executive council, the governor's executive council, which will be represented by DOT. But that, if there's no response, that's pretty much.
Right.
A fait accompli, we can move on, okay.
Yeah, and Phil Lyles will let me know.
Yeah.
When to move towards the survey.
Super great.
You don't let the cameras go over the White Oaks?
No.
We didn't.
I was gonna say, those hunting cameras, we probably were just sticking different spots where nobody could see them.
You were in three seasons or going to?
No, we have a list. And we're gonna make sure, make sure our list is full, because it used to be. We're all the way through state prison.
Keep her way going.
I don't know for sure, but it's like half the cost, isn't it, through the prison? But sometimes it takes a lot longer to get them.
But we can get the list together pretty quickly then.
Yeah, we got a list with probably 30.
I know you've got one that you've been working on for years, so.
Yeah, well, we keep adding, you know, the handle end here. But we'll do that.
Street sign, is there any missing?
Some of them, if you put up bill and within a week they're gone. Curry Road just seems to disappear. That's one of them.
Keizer Road seems to disappear. Shaw Hill seems to disappear, even though that's still there, thank God.
Bay Road's gone.
It's like 38 of them that were just gone.
Hoyt Road seems to go quite a bit. But that one, I always seem to have one. Somebody seems to bring it back to us, so.
Wait a minute?
Hoyt Road, yeah. Anyways, good enough.
On the street signs, I know we've talked before, and of course it's not a sawmill for everything, but maybe we can look at maybe having a bracket or something or the tamper proof. But then a lot of times you're yanking the whole signpost and everything, so that ain't gonna really fix that. But maybe the mold ones that are more prevalent to be installed.
They don't seem to take the pole as much as they do.
Just aside.
I mean, they'll take the bracket off, they'll take the bracket off, but they won't take the pole.
And sometimes they just break them off.
Break them off, right. But they're blue and they're a piece of crap, they're really not that good. Makes someone steal, make Julie a good project, set up over there, make a project. Perfect.
Are you going upstairs with us to the water district meeting at 7?
It's in 10 minutes.
It is.
We have it on here at 7:30.
I have it at 7:30? Oh, I think it's 7.
I was wondering what we're gonna do for a while.
I think it's 7. And I'm sure it is because people have been coming.
Okay.
My apologies.
Thanks, Joan.
Thank you.
Did you have anything, Harvey?
No, not just wondering when you, if anybody wanna get together, that coming up with the plan and what we wanna do.
We talked about that in, in the non-public session about creating job description, you know. Sitting down with a small group for not only the job itself, but also some type of an outline. You don't just hire somebody, you gotta be able to present, here's what our thoughts are. You know, nobody's gonna come in blind and say, you know, so we've already started the process. Because we don't have a lot of time, you know, it's a short window, so.
And the piece paper made up, so they can give you their ideas, what they think should be done, what they're qualified for and all that good stuff.
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a straightforward hiring process, resume, references, you know, just, you know, education, background, years of service, all this kind of stuff. So it's gonna be very straightforward. And pretty much.
It's pretty much it, I guess. Figure out some small details, I guess, as far as how we're gonna go forward and how we actually wanna have per se a committee, whether we wanna have a group of people, I say group, which would be a small people because I think too many.
You don't want too many because it creates everything.
Creates confusion. And maybe have some people that we can bring in, maybe on a more of a, on a one-on-one type thing and just get a few questions bounced back and forth, so kind of help the process go along. I guess when we see fit or, you know, maybe find some people that know more about a subject than, you know, people that might be on the board.
People that are down the people line, maybe.
Have background in it, have done it, I mean, obviously, you know. The other thing too is police, fire, forestry, warden, anybody who interacts with, with a road agent, you know, emergency services, they, not that they're gonna be part of the outline, but they, they need to be consulted. What, what kind of thing? Even the school, you know, how do you work, how do you interact with the school on a, you know, bad weather, you know, those types of things.
The bus company should be part of it too.
Bus company, yeah. All those little things that are done. And radius, how far away, you know, is it 10 minutes, 15 minutes, you know, all of that. So all these little things have gotta be ironed up. We've got a lot of notes and, you know, we'll pull it together and we'll, you know, we discuss some names and, you know.
Hopefully we can.
Chew on that and go ahead.
No, it's hopefully we can, it's somewhat of a smooth transition. Joan's willing to help us with guidelines.
You can put it, if you want to, it's just.
And the work with, you know, whoever we hire, all the work.
We gotta have stipulation, what's going on, that's all. What's going on and.
Absolutely.
But yeah, we have a lot of work to do in the next four or five months to try to come up with something to get somebody in place and get an outline and try to do the people's well.
And quite frankly, take a look at what other towns of our size, you know, what they lay out. I mean, they, there may be things in there we haven't even thought of, and those types of things. So your favorite subject, bids, you know, I mean, all those, all those types of things, we wanna make sure are covered and covered thoroughly. And so, yeah.
Also, what upstairs?
If you have another meeting, I'd like to be at it, if you have another meeting to get together. Just I'm nosey enough to put my two cents in.
Okay.
We'll definitely, we'll definitely sit down with you, whether it's a group of people or whatever, to go over some of your plan, your ideas. And you've obviously done some research with your other plan that didn't get presented to the town. So it'd be kind of interesting to.
That's still on, that's still in the works, still. That's what we gotta talk about.
Yep, so I'm sure at some point we can, the board can sit down with you and discuss some things.
We can, wait till then because we've got a lot of stuff to get going and make sure everything's in place when it comes to the end of it, that's all.
All right. So we're going to Jaren so we can go to the Andover Water Precinct District Meeting. Is that good, Mark, should I need to?
Nope, that's fine.
I move that we Jaren and move up to the library for the.
Actually, you can just recess.
Recess?
Yeah, just do a recess and then we'll come back.
And when we recess, we attend another meeting and we'll come back.
Yep. Okay. Back in session.
So I guess we have five minutes, you wanna hear Kim's things real quick before we have to get on to the next one?
Sure.
I'm here to address the bad spring conditions on Tucker Mountain Road as well as other dirt roads in Andover. The conditions are worse than normal due to the lack of regular maintenance and bad sections of the roads not being addressed. Yes, this is the country and mud season happens. No road will be mud free, but it doesn't mean the road should look similar to a four-by-four mud rally. Some of the sections of Tucker Mountain Road above number 228 are so bad, emergency response equipment may have issues getting to the residents and their property. Other dirt roads are in the same situation. This could potentially expose the town to a lawsuit and we don't want that to happen. It is too late for this year's mud season, but rather having constant, having to respond to constant complaints, Andover must take a proactive approach to road maintenance with regular inspections throughout the year, grading the road on a regular basis and the entire road. If the road agent can meet with residents on the road to discuss the road, residents know of the road and its issues, they are a great source of information. The road agent must be open to possible solutions from the residents. The town needs the right equipment to maintain the roads and should be in working order. Some of the equipment that might be, additional equipment that might be helpful is a scraper blade, a tow behind scraper blade. This could have been used on Saturday night before all the roads froze and it would have knocked down the high points and filled in some of the low points. Would have been perfect, but it would have definitely made it better once the road grows. Another piece of equipment that might have been handy is a roller. It would also help flatten out the road, it's tow behind. And it can also be utilized to compact the roads after they've been graded, which would increase the time between gradings on a road. These are not expensive items, they're like 500 bucks a pop. As a resident in Andover, I wanna be a part of the solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I do notice that, I wanna make comment, that he, they have been putting Phil on the bottom of Tucker Mountain Road, so they are doing something. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll be back tomorrow.
You wanna do the top out?
Yep, we'll go all the way to the top.
Thank you. So he is addressing the roads right now for mud season, but I would like to talk about the future.
And as far as the select board situation, as far as comments, I guess I'll comment to it is, it's just like every other town's deal with it. You know, and it becomes a budgetary thing. You know, the fix is pave all the roads. You know, I mean, it's one of those things that just, it's unfortunately, some years you don't have the issues, the next year you do, the next year you don't, the next three years you don't, then you do.
But it's to make notes and maybe possible resolutions so that if for some reason down the road, the budget allows maybe adding a different aggregate in that area or taking a few trees down so that the plow can push a snowbank back down. Little things like that might help certain areas of roads.
Some of the tree removal that was done up there allows the sun to be able to hit that road a lot, lot more of the day, so the frost comes out of the ground at a much faster pace than it does with those trees still being there.
Yes, I know.
That's all, on my road, it's the same, same thing. I get spots that are muddy and then there's spots that are still frozen and then the spots that are muddy depending on where the tree line is.
But there are certain things where, certain sections that the plow can't even push the snowbank back because there are trees literally on the side of the road that are in the way. And by, and it's on a downslope down, so that would allow the plow to be able to, if those trees were taken down, would allow the plow to be able to push the snow further back, which would allow it to drain downhill on, into the woods versus into the road. There's a couple of sections.
We can take advisory, but I mean, we understand the trees and the tight roads and stuff like that, but it's very expensive to eliminate trees on those type of roads. We have a bunch of trees that are dangerous. We have a hard time this, this summer, we've worked to try to eliminate, it's hard to get somebody to come in and eliminate some of those trees, just to get bits, to get people to come in that you need a crane for. So it's all at parts, whether there's electrical close by or, you know, it's just not a matter of somebody going in with a chainsaw or.
Yeah, I know that.
And dropping it, but it's just, it's expensive, it's budgetary.
Having a plan or little plans like, hey, these would be nice things to do if we can do them if our budget allows or if something comes up. There doesn't seem to be any plan in place to help with road issues. From a resident's perspective, I should say.
Well, you know, before each season, I think if we identify, you know, the four seasons and the issues that go on, as we have folks do, we've got brush, we've got a, we've got a callback, we've got trees that are in the way beyond the ones that we've already identified that are gonna run thousands of dollars to take down. But that being said, I think if we can set up a couple of, you know, you and your neighbors, come to a select board meeting or we schedule time and if you had one good idea that makes life just that much easier, I'm certainly all ears for it. Conversely, we are looking at an overall plan to go forward, which includes equipment and location, you know, for our highway guys. And not right away, but a plan which is gonna encompass exactly what you're saying. How do we maintain the roads? Who's gonna do it? Those types of things, so. But I have no problem, you know, prior to the winter season or at any time, to come in, have your folks, your folks as a neighborhood, you know, or, you know, other folks who are bouncing around, say, "Listen, I've noticed this, if, can we take these trees down?" And, you know, maybe it's something that we should consider if we, if we get budgeted. There may be a reason that we can't take the trees down. You know, the conservation committee may say, "No, you can't touch that." Again, but the more we know, the better off we all are and it lessens the frustration points.
Yeah.
You know, at least if you know we're working on it, it's like, okay, frustration level goes down. If we can't do it, we should be able to explain why or what we can do. I don't have any problem. And I'm sure.
I think a lot of people would be very happy with that.
Yeah, and you know, we've got four seasons, I think.
Five. Mud's one.
But, you know, prior to, prior to winter or, you know, as you're talking with your neighbors, come in, we meet twice a month and we're here at 6:30 and just call Town Hall, get on the agenda and just say, "Listen, can you spare, you know, 20 minutes, let's walk through this. Here's some things that we have noticed in our part of Andover."
Or we can even just, just meet with you. And have you come up to the neighborhood and meet with everybody all at once and then we can discuss everything.
I don't have a problem with that. Conver, but I don't have the kind of experience John has and that type of thing. But, you know, I'll jump in, have John jump in the truck, we'll go up together and, you know, lead on the hood and say, you know, you know, what's, you know, show us what you're, what you're up against. And that's helpful because I can share it with the board and I know what John's looking at so I can, you know, empathize across the board.
I did drive up to Saturday, it was muddy, I mean, obviously, so. I was really, no, I did drive up there, I spoke to you. I got it all the way to the end, the back.
Yeah.
Whatever. Tucker Mountain Road. Okay, so I get a few minutes behind. So you're all, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining me.
Oh, so we better move on to, see you, Joan.
I'm sorry.
See you, Joan, thank you.
Have a good night.
It's a review of the operational guidelines of the select board.
Such fun stuff. You all have in your packets the operational guidelines for board of selection. It talks about getting organized. Really, the only thing that differentiates the chair of the select board is that they set the agenda and everybody does it differently. Some people pretty much leave it to the town administrator, some people do it, talk to the town administrator, say what they want on it. But anybody on the board can put something on the agenda, well, anybody can put anything on the agenda, it doesn't have to be a board member. So Chuck and I can talk about how he wants to do that. But that's really the only additional duty that the chairperson has. The packet talks about all the different. The packet talks about all the different duties and lists the RSAs that are associated with them. Talks about public sessions and non-public sessions, sessions which we've just talked about. Non-meetings. That would be, as I said earlier, for instance, if we were meeting with the town's attorney. Hopefully, we won't have need for emergency meetings, but we can do it. We have to.
I'm sure we'll find a few of those.
I think we're going to probably, yes. Then it talks about public hearings and how to conduct those. Has a code of conduct that talks about interacting with other committees and commissions and general rules. And the relationship with staff. And other selectmen. That's pretty much it for that packet, and then the rules of procedure are separate. And I highlighted the appointments to town boards and committees. Prior to appointing any individual to a position on a town board or a committee other than a temporary or ad hoc committee, the town administrator shall solicit interest from the public and nominations from current committee members. At least one select board member shall interview each candidate for a position and recommend one or more individuals for appointment. And appointments shall be made by the majority vote of the board.
Marge, question?
Yeah.
How was the response at town meeting to the volunteer table, briefly?
I didn't get anybody to sign on the line, but I got names of people that are interested and would think about doing certain things, which is more than we've had in the past. So.
Well, at least you're thinking about an expressed interest, which is
And I just wanted everybody to know that serving on a committee or board that's appointed is open to everyone. It's not something that, you know, people get handpicked for.
Right.
So that, that was my biggest overall message. But I did have, I think it was four people that said they would be interested in certain things, so that was good.
Well, at least folks, I think if they didn't realize now, well, by having the volunteer table there with the various committees, that at least, you know, they, they can come to Town Hall.
Right.
Say, listen, I, I am interested, or I understand, or I heard. It's like, well, where do I go if they can come in here and certainly talk to one of us.
I plan to do it every town meeting day, because I think it is beneficial, and it's nice to thank the volunteers, so.
And get somebody new in the town like Steve Bowers. It's a good place for them to be able to come up and
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Look to see what boards and committees are there that we have.
Yep. And then the next section is just the meeting agenda, which we've already talked about a little bit. It's nothing very earthshaking. And then it gives the order of how we what we hear when in meetings. So first, it would be select board issues, then department heads, then citizens and residents, and then non-residents. And there's an order of business for each out. We can move it now. And then there's conduct with other selectmen, the public, and staff, which was in the other handout, but I think this one's a little bit better. The board, when dealing with the town administrator and town staff, shall one, recognize the administrative chain of command and refuse to act on complaints as an individual outside of the administration. Two, treat all staff as professionals and respect the abilities and integrity of each individual. Three, never as individuals publicly criticize an employee. Concerns of employee performance shall be handled by the town administrator or at the board level, usually in non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one A, colon, three. Four, not give orders to any such officers or employees, either publicly or privately, except as a board at meeting. Five, direct questions or requests for information to the town administrator or directly to a department head. I would ask if you do direct someone to the department head, that you shoot me a text or an email so that I'm aware, because oftentimes I get the next call and I don't know what anybody's talking about, so. I would just ask that you do that. And then limit the request for staff support and ensure that all requests go through the town administrator's office, so. If you have something that you want the staff to do, staff being Alita or Lois, and I guess probably Pat to some extent, too. Just let me know what it is you need, because we do have a workflow that we try to stick to, so I would need to schedule whatever it was that you need to perform. And then we had the copier guy here again today. Let's see. Okay, so this is C, and two is at the top of the next page, and says, no member, including the Chair or Vice Chair, shall conduct any town business outside a regular, regular scheduled meeting without the prior knowledge and approval of the board at a meeting and duly noted in the minutes. Anything discussed in non-public session is non-public for a reason. There are only certain, you have to meet certain criteria to go into non-public session, so whatever is discussed there stays there. Doesn't get talked about. The minutes can be sealed, or they can be made public within a specified period of time, so it's not like nobody's ever going to see it. And you already know that any discussion held or action taken within the closed session shall be considered closed to the public. Any person who reveals details of the closed session to the public is to be censured for their actions. And that was. You can read it all later, but those were the points that I wanted to make.
Did you, you able to say it, Marge?
No, these speak specifically to select board, but I get a
I
Yeah, I plan to revise it for all the boards and committees and have it when we meet with them, when I meet with them.
So the next thing is the town meeting action items. This is some of we've talked about a little bit earlier. I guess we'll go over a few where we are on camera. One of the things that I took out of it and heard from a lot of people, or a few people, was the word confused. People were confused about how the, how the meeting was ran, or what point, or where we were at at the meeting. I think everybody had a little bit of that, so we're going to try next year to clean it up again. Maybe do department by department, and try to stay more focused instead of bouncing around the way we did this year. Maybe else, Dave?
No, I think you've hit the nail on the head. Obviously, every time we do it, you do it a little bit better, and you heard exactly the same thing. Keep it, you know, department by department. If necessary, go into a particular line that a resident may have a question on, but again, just for the sake of sanity and time, you know, going department by department. Because I think a lot of things that were done last year, we did not have the opportunity to tell the residents what was accomplished and the various actions that were taken, and, which is unfortunate, but those things happen.
I'd like to put those in beacon article. Thank you. People need to know.
That's on it.
Okay.
Yeah, for ones that didn't make it or get the handout that we had prior to. To show what we've done.
Okay.
You got anything, Bill?
No.
Okay. Marge, I guess we're back to you. Town administrator's report.
One night?
We're seven minutes ahead of schedule, so it's going good.
All right.
My first meeting's going good. We're ahead of schedule.
And I'll keep you ahead of schedule, but my report is, is fairly short. Now that town, town meeting is in the history books, we have to do the reports for the Department of Revenue Administration. As to like the appropriations voted and that kind of thing. All of that eventually in the fall rolls into the tax rate. But there are, there's a lot of paperwork that has to be done after town meeting, so we are working on that. We're also preparing for the financial audit, which will be the first week in May, which sounds like it's a long ways off, but it'll be here before we know it, and although the auditors are actually here three or four days, there's a lot of prep that we have to do before they ever get here, so we are working on that diligently.
The Avatar assessment, that's also looming very close.
It is. We've had a really good response to the solar registration forms. I bet we've got one back from almost everybody. I'm going to go down the list tomorrow and see who hasn't. And then the next round of letters need to go out for the exemptions and the credits to make sure that people are still eligible for the credits and elderly exemptions and things like that, just to verify and make any revisions that are necessary.
All right, I guess we move on to correspondence and signatures.
The ZBA meeting is tomorrow night, seven.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah. I'm going to attend. Marge, you're going to?
You got a plan on it. That's on your pit?
Well, it's kind of reorganizing for them to, because we've got new members and
Yeah, their Chair, Vice Chair have stepped down. There's new members sworn in, and there's a couple of issues that have to be discussed. Yeah, you'll get your twelve, twelve pages of
Eighteen pages.
Eighteen pages of issues, double sided, baby.
The first thing that I have, I have several content cuts. And this one's on Beach Hill. And it requires signatures at the bottom.
All three?
All three. Yeah, so just right there, just. This one's on Tucker Mountain. It's actually on the bottom right there. Well, and the access road is Tucker Mountain, but I think it's actually Maple Street. I'm going to give copies of these to John tomorrow because obviously the road's an issue. And the tree, we changed it past.
A little bit, a little bit. A little bit.
As it so.
The outer been blown.
That's good. And this one's up on four, right? This is an intent to excavate on Bridge Road. It's an annual intent. And this is the signature page four. The contract that we have with Sanders Searches, they do the mortgagee searches for tax lien. Do it every year. She usually caps it. I don't see what she has to, but I don't see it here. She projects that the cost will be four hundred forty dollars based on last year. Searching all the county records.
Yeah.
You don't need a signature?
No, it goes with
Oh, go through that.
That's the signature page for this.
The signature?
That is it.
No, right, it's cramped tight, Bill?
No?
Not tight.
Oh, before we adjourn, I, I'm a candidate to stay on as a trustee for the cemeteries.
Yeah, that's possible. You can't be Chair when you can stay on.
No, I, no, I wouldn't take Chair.
Yeah.
But because I've got a lot of things that I dealt with through the winter, but we've got three burials coming up and coordinating with people and also I've contacted Evan's Tree Service to take some trees down with us. I've got to verify that. Went up with Ozzy, helped apply a little bit in the cemeteries and so outside, no, I don't tend to be Chair.
Yeah. No, that's it. I think that's in the, in the rules and regs.
Probably is, yeah.
You can be a member, but it's like I couldn't be the Chair of the planning board. That makes official, you know, that's the way I look at it, so. Not a problem.
It doesn't say that those are incompatible. I think they're fine. Some offices are incompatible, but I think that one's, I think you're good.
Yes, we do.
I'm tired of finding everybody wants to do it, John.
It's hard.
I mean, there's a lot more involved than people realize.
Oh, I know.
That I have.
Yep.
You need a mer.
I don't need them. I think if
Marge, you want Marge, you and Marge gave me some copies of various job descriptions. If you want copies of them, they're basically just, you know, from other towns, just to kind of, it's a guide. If you want copies, fine. If not, I'll just take, I'll glean it and pull.
Yeah, actually, give me a copy, and if I can get a copy of what the Town has for the elected road agent, what we use for that, just to kind of compare those.
So you can have them all.
And then the other thing I wanted a copy for, we had talked about it, was the Hoyle Town for Elbow Pond Road, and they did the, for some reason, I couldn't get that email you sent to tell us about.
Oh, summary?
Yeah.
A cost?
Right. For some reason, I couldn't get that to come up on my email to be able to print that.
I don't have it with me, it's in another file, but okay. Marge, you got it, so.
How many, how many do you have? I mean, you don't need to give me, how many copies from other towns do you have? Is it just two?
There you go.
I don't need it. I don't need it from everybody, just to get a pair of a normal sized pound.
Well, I'm more interested in, I'm just interested in the wording. Basically, seven pages, one sided. I'll run it through.
And everything?
Everything I've got.
The Town, I have a copy of that, but I don't know where the hell it is.
Oh, one thing I wanted to say was, when you were talking about the whole process of hiring, one of the best places to advertise is going to be through the Municipal Association. I'll put it up on their board, because then you're from a, dealing with people that are from a pool of experience.
More and more people, yeah.
And it's a big deal.
Those people talk to each other, so.
Yes, they do.
I have, Craig Steffens is supposed to give me a labor sheet, too, from what Franklin has. So that may help as a gauge.
Mentioned me.
I have it in London, too.
So, yeah, it'd be good to have a couple of comparisons for towns that are around us.
Absolutely.
Wouldn't be a bad idea if we even got Danbury's, too.
Danbury has a small, small department, full-time media. They have their own equipment. To Hill, like, a small town, they had their own equipment.
Right.
But they don't, I don't believe they do the miles. We have 60 miles. I don't think the, because the state does a lot of theirs. Like Murray, Murray Hill, you know, Route 3 goes up through there.
Right.
So are we getting the minutes in there? We're squeezing them in there before you.
Oh, I forgot, again. A mental block about it.
We have 12 more minutes before the successive adjournment.
All right, so here you go, you have 12 minutes.
We're wanting to do the meetings. I'm gonna add it right here.
I had two questions on them.
Which one?
March 4th. I needed two dates, when the, do you have those?
I do, I have them up on my desk.
Okay, so I get those from you. And then the other thing was, was that the correct word, the DTC lawyer's representation? Notification, was that what that was?
I just took it out of the folder today, too.
It had to do with the PSNH thing?
Yes.
Is that what that was? The notification that they were representing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We had several comments from them, like.
If you want a copy, Bill, I have an extra copy if you want to read them. I think I sent them to you in email.
The ten minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you did.
Marge, there was a question from a ZBA member who's out of town for the winter, did you have a chance to?
I've addressed it, and she hasn't gotten back to me, but I did address it.
So what you need is a motion, correct?
Well, I thought it was something that.
You caught something?
Yeah, when I read it, that's my problem, is I read it when you first put it out, and too many things go by from your arm, or I need to print it out. So on the notes, it just kind of gets fuzzy. Says, how much work will the Highway Department do on Last Street Bridge? And then, then towards the end, I guess, the second or last sentence, Thompson noted that the sheeting, sheeting and digging will be done with outside contractors. That sounds like you're talking about Elbow Pond Road, not Last Street Bridge.
I see what you're talking about.
So the sheeting, I'm taking that as being the pylons driven into the.
So that has nothing to do with Last Street Bridge?
That has nothing to do with Last Street Bridge.
Two different projects.
The way I read that, that's the way I would take it. Now.
It's a good catch.
Sheeting or the decking, but just the way it is, where it says, sheeting and digging will be done by outside contractors, it's.
So I should take that out? We have Elbow Pond on here?
It doesn't say anything about Elbow Pond.
All right, so I'll just take that.
It's far in those notes. And they take about three weeks, that's all about Elbow Pond Road.
Yeah, because Last Street is gonna be a four, basically a two or three day job. They're saying day and a half, realistically, say two or three days, based on what I've.
I think that was the only thing that I, I was confused on, we needed a copy.
So I can either make a note that that was for Elbow Pond?
Well, you can basically.
Because it was for Town Meeting, questions that you were talking, going back and forth, so I can do a thing that says Elbow Pond and put those notes in.
Yeah, you can just sort of get that and make a third point.
Yeah.
Thompson noted that the sheeting, digging for Elbow Pond will be done with outside contractors. The project should take about three weeks. Be able to fish in there.
Just for the drive.
Just for the drive.
You good, Bill?
Yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Well, I do.
You gotta accept the minutes.
Don't drop it.
I told you this is gonna be a slow, early, yeah.
I make a motion, it'll be accepted minutes for the March 4th meeting as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
So we good to go?
Anything else to say, David?
No, no. That's unusual.
Yeah, one of the chants.
Yeah, please, a special segment, boy.
You still have to make a motion for that, though, to adjourn.
Yeah.
I'm going to.
Oh, okay.
You make a motion to adjourn, okay?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, this is confusing, CK and BK.